Hi, Mr. Dara. My name is Gretchen Moore. This is a book of exhibits we may be using tonight. I'm one of the solicitors for the township. We are here today for this portion of the meeting to hold a hearing pursuant to the MPC, Section 9, 905 regarding your removal from the zoning hearing board due to improper board-related items that were in their files that I'd like to enter into evidence before we get into the questioning of Mr. Dara. The first is the February 13, 2012 minutes in Board Supervisors' regular meeting. And in particular, I would direct everyone's attention to page five of those minutes, Items 3 and 4. Item 3 states that Mr. Brozot moved to reappoint Connor Fox as a regular member of the zoning hearing board. Mr. Dicer seconded three eyes and the motion carried. Item number 4 in those minutes, Mr. Dicer -- am I saying that name correctly? Move to reappoint David Keane as a regular member of the zoning hearing board. Mr. Brozot seconded, three eyes, and the motion carried. Again, that date was February 13, 2012. The next exhibit I would like to enter into evidence is the May 14, 2012 Board Supervisors' regular meeting minutes. And I will direct everyone's attention to page 3 on those minutes under New Business, item G1. Mr. Capola stated that we have a letter from David Sepse expressing interest in filling the open position on the Robinson Township zoning hearing board. Mr. Brozot has not had any questions for Mr. Sepse. And item number 2, Mr. Brozot's moved to appoint Mr. Sepse as a regular member of the Robinson Township zoning hearing board. Mr. Capola seconded, two eyes, and the motion carried. Again, that was May 14, 2012. The next exhibit I'd like to enter into evidence is just a copy of the MPC statute that relates to membership on the zoning hearing board. It's 53 PS 10903. And in part, it states that "The membership of the board shall, upon the determination of the governing body, consist of either three or five residents of the municipality appointed by resolution by the governing body. The terms of office of a three-member board shall be three years, and so fixed that the term of office of one member shall expire each year." It goes on to state in part that "The board shall promptly notify the governing body of any vacancies which occur. Appointments to fill vacancies shall be only for the unexpired portion of the term." I've also included for the record a citation of the statute, MPC, the 53 PS 10905, which relates to removal of members. And it states that "Any board member may be removed for malfeasance, misfeasance, or nonfeasance in office, or for other just cause by a majority vote of the governing body which appointed the member, taken after the member has received 15 days' advance notice of the intent to take such a vote. A hearing shall be held in connection with the vote if the member shall request it in Next exhibit I'd like to enter into evidence is the regular meeting minutes from the December 9, 2013 Board of Supervisors' meeting. And I will direct everyone's attention to, under New Business, paragraph 4, where Mr. Capola moved to appoint Mr. George Proch as an alternate to the zoning hearing board. Mr. Brozot seconded, three eyes, motion carried. And also paragraph 5, under New Business, where it states, "Mr. Capola moved to reappoint Connor Fox as an alternate to the zoning hearing board. Mr. Brozot seconded, three eyes, and the motion carried." Again, that was December 9, 2013. The last set of minutes I believe that I'd like to enter into evidence is Exhibit 6, is the December 30, 2013 regular meeting minutes of the Board of Supervisors. And I will direct everyone's attention to New Business, paragraph number 6 and 7. Paragraph number 6 states, "Mr. Capola stated that we have received some letters from three residents regarding serving on the zoning hearing board. They were from Luke Dara, Mike Donaldson, and Joe Radel." Paragraph number 7 states that "Mr. Capola moved to appoint Luke Dara to the zoning hearing board as a regular member." Mr. Love seconded, two eyes, and the motion carried. Again, that was December 30, 2013. I will also note for the record that it says it's a regular -- the regular meeting minutes for that month, but it was actually a special meeting. The next item I'll be entering into evidence is an email string. It's dated Friday, October 18, 2013. It's from Mr. Michael Behrens. And it is addressed to members of the Planning Commission and the zoning hearing board. And the subject line is "Term Limits." Mr. Behrens writes, "I am updating our current files that would include all of your term limits on your appointments to the Planning Commission and zoning hearing board. If you could just advise me of your term expirations, it would allow me to confirm and update our files. If your term limit is close to expiration, can you please include if you desire to remain on the affected boards so that when your term is close to its expiration, the Board of Supervisors will know if you desire to serve additional terms for your community?" And then he goes on to state, "The lower the dates I have for all of you," and he lists the members of the Planning Commission with dates of importance for tonight is the list of the zoning hearing board members and dates of their term expiration. He lists Connor Fox with an expiration date of 2/12/2014. He lists David Keane with an expiration date of 2/12/2015. And he lists Dave Sepse with an expiration date of 5/13/2015. Mr. Fox responds to this email on October 19, 2013, stating, "Mike, I can stay on as an alternate, but if the Supervisors have someone else in mind, they can let me go. I won't mind." Mr. Fox also submitted with that email string a memorandum of, it appears, some -- his version of events he dated at 6/3/2014. He is not here tonight to speak to those and the particular events that he wrote down. So I'm going to go in and put some other evidence in the record that was contemporaneous with that time period. The next item I'd like to enter into evidence as Exhibit 8 is the January 15, 2014 letter from Mr. Connor Fox. It's directed to the Robinson Township Supervisors and zoning hearing board members. And it states, "Please be advised that I do not wish to complete another term on the zoning hearing board when my term expires in February 2014. I would like to express my gratitude to the citizens of Robinson Township for allowing me to represent their zoning interests. Also, a big thank you goes to my fellow board members, the solicitor, and the zoning officer for the experience that I acquired and the civic duty that you perform." The next item I'll be entering into the record as Exhibit 9 is an email from Mr. Connor Fox. It's dated January 17, 2014, and is directed to Mr. David Sepse, Harlan Stone, Michael Behrens, and another email address for Michael Behrens. In this email, Mr. Fox states, "Gentlemen, there seems to be some confusion about my future status with the ZHV. I said that I was willing to stay on a few months if needed. Since Luke Dara is now a full member, there is no need for me to remain on the board. Therefore, I was planning on just letting my membership expire in February and not be reinstated. But since the Supervisors reinstated me for another three-year term, I guess that I am resigning from the board. Clear as mud? Question mark. Again, thanks for the opportunity, and I wish all of you the best of luck." Now, Mr. Fox is not here to testify tonight as to his version of events. We've entered into evidence items that he has stated contemporaneous with when they And I can say for the record, so that everyone is clear, the zoning hearing board terms are three-year terms. We saw in the record that Mr. Fox was appointed February 13, 2012. He was appointed as a regular member, which should have been a three-year term. And we also see that he was informed by Mr. Behrens that his term was to expire in February of 2014. And that was Exhibit 7. Which, whether it was correct or incorrect, that was the information that was conveyed to him by the township. And all he could base -- that was all he could base his future status with the board on, is the fact that he was informed that his zoning hearing board term ended February of Now, Mr. Dara, you were appointed to the zoning hearing board as a regular member at the special meeting on December 30, 2013. Is that correct?
If that's what's in there, then that's correct, yeah.
And it's your understanding that you were appointed as a regular member to fill Connor Fox's position? Is that correct?
Well, I don't know whose position I was going to take over. I just understood that I would be appointed as a regular member.
And you expressed an interest in joining the zoning hearing board prior to that date, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you informed Mr. Capola?
That is correct.
Did you send him the letter to that effect?
Probably a phone call. I don't know if we have a letter.
And when was that phone call?
Well, geez, man.
Approximately, it was in the fall of 2013?
Well, I mean, I would speak with Brian on almost -- on a regular basis, but I would speak to him quite often about what's going on in the township. So I guess the phone call or the conversation would have taken place prior to me applying for a position.
Okay. Was it in December of 2013? Do you recall expressing an interest in joining the zoning hearing board in December?
I can't give you a specific date. I'm sorry. I can't recall. I didn't think this was going to be an issue, so I wasn't taking notes.
And I understand. Memory is a fuzzy thing sometimes, and it fades quickly, and I appreciate that. But you do understand that you were appointed on December 30, 2013?
Yes.
And the status of the zoning hearing board at that time is for the Supervisors to decide at that time. But at that time, it was Mr. Connor Fox, Mr. David Sepse, and Mr. David Keane, who is according to Exhibit 7, which is from this office, which went out to those three gentlemen.
Okay.
And do you have any understanding of which vacancy you thought you were filling?
I do not, no.
Okay. I don't think I have any further questions for Mr. Dara. I do have a video that I'd like to enter into evidence from last month's zoning hearing board meeting. It's just a short clip. So I'd like to play that video. And I will be asking one of you, if you are familiar, to identify the voices in this video. And I'll turn around so you can see it as well. This picture is explained that it was this -- there are some, there are some. See, when you see letters while you're here. After this series ends, we'll get into the appropriate -- we'll use the back of the tape. Should we take down the person? Let's just do that. And all that will be in the comments. I was glad it was real. I was glad it was real. Let me off the station. Let me just stop there a second, so we can identify some people and then see. Okay. When I told you to start recording, there was a woman who was speaking. Can any of you identify the woman who was speaking when we started paying attention?
Yes, same as you wish.
After the woman spoke, Mr. Kendall then made a comment. Is that correct? After Mr. Kendall made a comment, there was someone in the audience who responded, "It's true," after Mr. Kendall's comments.
Actually, we got to back up a little bit. This is your work of speaking. You're first. Mr. Brozot's answered every question, and Mrs. Vance, let him answer, speak. And then I respond.
Okay.
There was two women that spoke.
Right, okay. I wasn't having her pay attention to the second woman, so let's correct the record. The woman who spoke?
The woman you mentioned.
Correct.
Mrs. Vance.
After Mr. Vance spoke?
Mrs. Vance.
Sorry. Mrs. Vance. After Ms. Vance spoke, Mr. Kendall then made some statements on the record, which you were able to take down. Okay, I'll get you a copy of it. And then after Mr. Kendall spoke, there was a gentleman in the audience who said, "It's true." Can you please identify that person for me? Anyway.
It's Connor Fox.
Okay. Should we play that part again?
You can listen to it, Sarah, if you could.
Yep, let's play it again.
Get it close to you.
To hear the gentleman state, "It's true," after Mr. Kendall made his statement.
I heard that. Oh, you may get a little lean in close, but we got to get a microphone here.
Who was the gentleman who spoke and said, "It's true"? Would you like to hear that again, Mr. Dara?
I don't think it can be as loud as it makes it look.
Yeah, and I --
It's like my memory.
That's the technology problem here. We can only get it so loud.
What did Mr. Fox say?
It's true.
What's true?
Here. Yes, let me -- I'll let you listen to what Mr. Kendall said again, and then you'll hear his response. states that Mr. Fox was shocked when he showed up to the zoning hearing board reorganization meeting in January and found out that he had been reappointed to an alternate.
Okay, is that what that all was?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
And then?
We need to have to listen to him if he's talking.
Well, we do want to get in that Mr. Fox isn't here, and that's the only record evidence we have that we can actually put into the record, because I can't really testify for him. And I can't recreate things. But so, to summarize or to state for you what happened, you heard Mr. Kendall speaking about being at the zoning hearing board reorganization meeting, Mr. Fox being shocked, and Mr. Fox responding from the audience that it's true.
That he was shocked.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yes, and we're putting this into the record. And I will send it to you so that you can try to express the comments to your people. Okay, so that will be in the record as well. Were you at the zoning hearing board reorganization meeting, Mr. Dara?
Yeah, I was there.
Okay.
I don't recall him being shocked, but that's fine.
Okay. Well, the zoning hearing board reorganization meeting took place in January of 2015? Is that correct?
That's something.
Was it January 15th or January 14th of 2014? Okay. And you do see in evidence that the day of or the day after the zoning hearing board reorganization meeting, it was Exhibit 8, Mr. Fox submitted a letter of resignation wherein he stated, "I do not wish to complete another term on the zoning hearing board when my term expires in February 2014."
Okay.
And you also saw as Exhibit 9, Mr. Fox's email, which was several days after the zoning hearing board reorganization meeting, where he states, "Therefore, I was just planning on letting my membership expire in February and not be reinstated." Did you see that as well? Do you gentlemen have any other questions for Mr. Dara? Or need any points of clarification for the hearing? Mr. Dara, is there anything else you'd like to say on the record?
Well, if in this section it says that any board member may be removed for malfeasance, misfeasance, nonfeasance in the office, or for other just cause by a majority vote of the governing body which appointed the member, I'll just say that these guys up here were not the governing body that appointed them. That's my position. It consisted of Mr. Brozot, Mr. Capola, and Mr. Love. That's my opinion. You can do what you want.
And I will just state on the record that the governing body is the entity of the Board of Supervisors. It's not a particular board. It is the governing body who sits at the time. It's the entity, not the person.
It's the governing body that sits at the time?
Correct. It is an entity. It's not a particular person. So it's tied to the office, not the person, because we all know boards change.
Yes, thank you.
Is there anything further that anyone needs to hear? Then we'll close this hearing, subject to getting some more clarification on transcribing that.
I would make a motion to remove Luke Dara based on the improper appointment of timing I'm going to add a little bit to that with, "Due to forcing a vacancy." Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved in seconds to remove Luke Dara from the zoning hearing board. We'll call a vote. Mr. Brozot?
No.
Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Our vote is yes. Have we received any new letters in the last eight months before? It's supposed to be a finding of the zoning hearing board, the exception of Mike Dawson and you. Mr. Durant, I was trying to think of his first name. Joe. Does anybody have any others? I hope for my guy to get anything under the desk too, so. But I mean, that's going to be this last correction. Okay, we have letters from Mike Dawson and Joe Radel. Radel, sorry. Both of us seem to be appointed to the zoning hearing. Do you gentlemen have any preference? I'm going to make a motion to appoint Mike Dawson to the zoning hearing board. The term ending at the end of this year, and we deal with all of the misappointments to the zoning hearing board, we have to straighten out and reorganize.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. I don't believe you can take action without opening it to the public for
Mr. Fox isn't here to explain, you know, an act of the fact writing of him recounting what he's, what he believes happened.
That you read the other emails?
Right, the contemporaneous emails wherein he was stating things at that time, that's evidence. Not something that someone creates after the fact. If he were here tonight and we asked him to be here to, to answer questions, that's a different story. Otherwise, it's an investigation.
Anybody else?
Richard Ward. Just curious, and I don't know either of the gentleman's names that you mentioned, having put in for interest in the zoning hearing board, but how was, how was the openings advertised to the, to the community for others to express interest? So, I don't recall having seen it anywhere. I don't recall seeing it in the newsletter or anything like that. So, I know you just asked Ms. Rumple if she had received additional, but how would those additional letters possibly have come in if, if it wasn't out there to the public? This is what I'm curious about.
To my knowledge, I've never seen it advertised before. That's just my, that's not really the fact, but I've never seen any papers stating that I've ever seen.
Would it, would it maybe make sense to hold off on appointing somebody, put something out to the public and take additional? And again, I don't know either of the gentleman. They may be perfectly fine, but I know you just asked the question, that if there was anybody else that had submitted, do you think maybe putting it out there to give somebody else a chance to submit would be prudent?
We're gonna have to have a field announcement carry on business, and we're gonna reappoint in January.
Okay.
So, at that point, whoever would, we could advertise at that point, whoever wants to submit letters in January can submit letters, and we can move from there. There's a lot of work we have to do with the appointments that were appointed that did not meet the NPC requirements at this time. So, we will revisit that at the January pre-organization meeting at that time. Any else?
Before we, before we roll, before we roll call vote, so that people know where my vote's coming from, I have, I have nothing against Mr. Donaldson wanting to be on the zoning hearing board. However, the procedure that this board is using to correct somewhat, I believe, to be honest mistakes, and also to remove some people who have been, what I feel, objective and completely disagree with. So, when we roll call vote, my vote's gonna be no. It's a protest of what this board's doing.
Okay. Roll call vote, Mr. Rosen's?
No.
Mr. Durant?
Yes.
My vote is yes. Motion carries. That moves us on to new business. We have been without a manager for a short period of time now. We conducted a dozen or so interviews with potential candidates. Mr. Rosen's chose not to attend any of the interviews, so I'm not sure where he'll stand on where we're at today. We, of all the people that applied, only one had previous township manager experience. We have a lot of secretaries, a lot of people with management skills, a lot of people with accounting, but no one with our township service. We found a woman who is currently working for West Pike Run Township, and when she took over as manager there, the day she started as manager, the supervisor quit after he had taken $95,000 of the people's money. She walked into a checkbook of $690-some dollars in change, and all of the money was missing from the bonds that people had made, and in three years' time, their township is no longer happening to take out a tax anticipation loan, which those who attended meetings know what that is, because we know one right now. So, based on her being the only person that applied with actual township management skills, and the ability to crawl off from underneath of $700 to a township that's now operating in a good financial status, seemed like a very good candidate for us. So, I'm gonna make a motion to hire, the woman's name is Erin Sappolak, and if you punch her name in and look on the, I do post gazette or trip, one of the papers, there's an article about her with the whole township situation, which is actually how I discovered her. And, or how I researched and found out about her, I should say. So, I'm gonna make a motion to hire her as our township manager. Starting date would be two weeks from tomorrow, and there you go. Do you have a second? Second. Mr. Rosen's, I feel it's a real shame that you did not sit in on any interviews. I wish you would, but it's your choice. Anyway, roll call vote to hire Erin Sappolak as the township manager. Mr. Rosen's?
No.
Mr. Durant?
Yes.
My vote is yes. Motion carries.